I would also like to acknowledge additional appreciation for the MHDC staff and Metro IT for coordinating the extra backroom details of this virtual meeting. For those of you on the call, please be sure to mute your devices. And if you have your TV on, mute that as well. Thank you. Call to order, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission Meeting of April 22nd, 2020. Out of the abundance of caution in pursuant to recommendations from federal, state, and local health agencies regarding avoiding group gatherings due to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting is a teleconference meeting. Advanced public comments have been possible through email, mail, fax, and voicemail and will be read at the time of the relevant case. We will also take live comments via phone. The number of that, the telephone number for that is 629-255-1910. And we will repeat that through the meeting. Please do not call until the project you wish to speak about is announced. At this time, I will take roll call of the commissioners in attendance. When I say your name, please say present. Good afternoon, commissioners. Vice Chairman Stewart? Are you on the line? Okay. Move forward. Commissioner Fitz?
Present.
She's having trouble joining.
Okay, who, who just voiced? Is that Vice Chairman Stewart?
No, you said, I'm sorry. I thought you said Tibbs. Did you say Fitz? I apologize.
That's okay, Commissioner Tibbs. We'll count you present.
And this is Commissioner Fitz. I'm here now. Apologies. I had some technical difficulties.
No worries. Commissioner Jones? Present. Commissioner Mayhall?
She's muted.
Present.
Commissioner Moseley?
Present.
Commissioner Price? Commissioner Price? Well, you're not hearing you even if you're unmuted. Oh, you've muted again. Okay, um, we'll go back to Vice Chairman Stewart. Are you in? Okay. All right, and Commissioner Tibbs, one more time.
Present. Brian Tibbs.
Okay. I think we're good. Our next item on the order is the commission must vote on the record that the COVID-19 pandemic requires us to hold a telephonic meeting as permitted under the Governor's Executive Order Number 16. Mr. Dickerson, our legal counsel, would, would you like to give us some direction for today?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. Just briefly, I wanted to let you all know that the reason that we're able to meet electronically this afternoon is because the Governor issued an executive order Number 16 which gives specific exemptions to the Tennessee Open Meetings Act, which normally prohibits Metro boards and commissions from being able to meet electronically. However, due to the COVID-19 outbreak, the Governor suspended some of those rules and allowed boards and commissions to meet electronically under certain circumstances. There are a couple issues, a couple exceptions that were put into place. One is that the actions of the board must constitute essential business. Additionally, poll voting is required to today as opposed to the normal voice vote that you would normally give. The Chair will have to go commissioner by commissioner to do a poll vote. And also, we have to make reasonable efforts to make the public be able to view this meeting simultaneously with the streaming and also do with the telephonic participation. So I would recommend considering a motion to, that the meeting agenda constitutes essential business of this body and that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Do we have a motion to hold this electronic meeting? And Commissioner? Commissioners?
This is Commissioner Stewart. So moved.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Price. So second.
We have a first and a second. So I'll take a roll call on the first and second motions. When I say your name, please unmute and respond yea or nay.
Madam Chair, you may want to ask if there's any discussion on that before we do the actual roll call.
Got you. Thank you. Are there any discussions or questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to the roll call. So again, when I say your name, please unmute and respond yea or nay. Vice Chairman Stewart?
Yea.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yea.
Commissioner Jones?
Yea.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yea.
Commissioner Moseley?
Ye- yea.
Commissioner Price?
Yea.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next item is a motion to suspend the rule. So please raise your hand and I will call on you.
Madam Chair, this is Alex Dickerson from Legal Again. Can I give a brief explanation before you take a vote here?
Absolutely.
Okay, this is, what this is, is kind of a cleanup motion that we're requesting. Obviously, the, most of the rules and procedures that your commission has adopted contemplate that this will be an in-person meeting because that's normally how we do it and the Open Meetings Act forbids it from being done any other way. Now with the Governor's Executive Order, we just want to make sure that there's not a conflict. So the motion that we're seeking to, for you all to move is to move that any rules or procedures of MHCC that are in conflict with the Governor's Executive Order prohibiting electronic meetings are hereby suspended until such time as the executive order expires.
Everyone understood? Okay. So I ask that a motion be made to suspend the rule according to the executive order. Give me a second since I've been going through the script here. Okay, Commissioner Tibbs? Please unmute.
Yep, so moved.
Okay, there is a motion? Is there a second?
Second from Commissioner Stewart.
Okay. I'll take roll call for the motion. Again, when I say your name, unmute and respond yea or nay. Vice Chairman Stewart has already seconded, but do we need to ask that again? Yes, is there any discussion? Okay, I'll take the roll call. Vice Chairman Stewart?
Yea.
Mr. Fitz?
Yea.
Commissioner Jones?
Yea.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yea.
Mr. Moseley?
Yea.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes, yes.
The motion is approved. All right, here we are to our normal preamble to our meeting. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Law, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. For each case, there will be, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal of public comment. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for five minutes as a representative of a group or organization. At this time, we have not received any such requests for this meeting. During the public hearing, staff will first read any comments received in writing. No voicemails were received at this time. Finally, members of the public calling in will be heard.
We do have some changes to the agenda. 1401 Roberts has removed their request for adding. 722 McBarren has deferred. And we ask that the design guideline consolidation project be deferred until we can begin. Is there, Commissioner, who would like to make a motion to accept the revised agenda?
Commissioner Moseley moved to adjust the agenda as presented.
Second from Commissioner Stewart.
Okay. Does anyone have, we have under discussion or any comments, please? Please raise your hand. We'll notify that. Okay, seeing none. I'll take a roll call of votes for this motion. Again, when you say your name, please say yea or nay. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yea.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yea.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yea.
Commissioner Moseley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public to call in if someone would like an item removed from the consent agenda by calling again 629-255-1910. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda will be moved to the end of the agenda. And we will have Ms. Sajid will read the items and then I will ask if anyone would like an item removed from consent. Ms. Sajid?
Yes.
You have the floor.
Yes, the first item on the consent agenda is approval of the administrative permits issued for the month. And next is 1236 Riverwood Drive, which is for an addition. 3621 Richland Avenue is for infill in an outbuilding. Infill is typically not on the consent agenda. However, this project is part of a larger project that you voted on earlier, earlier in the project to place on consent. And 107 Linsley Park Drive is for an addition with a setback determination. And then on the next slide, 2111 Natchez Trace is for an addition and 2404, 2404 Blair is for an addition with a setback determination. So staff recommends approving these projects along with their applicable conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Sajid. Commissioners, do you have any questions or discussions? Okay. Seeing none, if anyone, does this public hearing, do they get to?
We haven't had any callers.
Okay. Okay. Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Jones? Or Commissioner Tibbs? Which one?
Commissioner Jones, I second the motion.
Okay. There is a first and there's a second. And now I'll do roll call. One more time. Unless you have any other questions, Stone? All right, here we go for the roll call. Vice Chairman Stewart?
Yea.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yea.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yea.
Commissioner Moseley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Hey, thank you, commissioners. We're going, moving on to 421 Church Street. And now is the time for anyone in the public to call on the specific project. And again, the number is 629-255-1910. And Ms. Baldock will be informing us of this project and historic landmark.
Yes.
Ms. Baldock?
Yes, I'm here, sorry. 421 Church Street, also known as the Cohen Building, was constructed in 1905 for Meyer and Georgiana Cohen. The architect of record was James Yaman, best known for being the architect of the Holly Street Fire Hall. However, Georgiana Cohen, an avid artist and art collector, likely had a hand in the design of the building as well. As a newspaper article from the time, notes that she drew designs that Yaman translated into architectural drawings. The top two floors of the building were the home of Meyer and Georgiana Cohen, while the ground floor was rented out as a storefront. Later in life, after her husband's death, Georgiana Cohen donated her estate, including 421 Church Street and her remarkable art collection to Peabody College, which constructed the Cohen Memorial Building with the donation. The building's neoclassical style architecture is remarkably intact and the building is significant for both its architecture and its connections to the Cohns. The Cohen Building meets the National Register of Historic Places criteria A, B, and C. The Cohen Building is therefore eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. As an eligible building, the property meets standards 1, 2, 3, and 5 of 17.36.12. Staff suggests that the Metro Historic Zoning Commission recommend approval of the historic landmark to the Planning Commission and Metro Council and the adoption of existing historic landmark design guidelines to apply to exterior alterations. Staff finds the building is eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places and therefore meets the requirement of Section 17.36.120. The applicant will not be presenting, but is in full support of the designation, as is the council member.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baldock. Commissioners, do you have any questions to staff?
Do you have some public comments? Paula Middlebrook at 239 Fifth Avenue North sent the following email. Quote, "I wanted to submit a comment regarding the proposed historic landmark overlay to the Cohen Building, 421 Church Street, as I will not be able to attend the public meeting. I'm in full support and favor of this designation. I live downtown near the Cohen Building and enjoy its beauty nearly every day and am thrilled this designation is being pursued to support keeping the store integrity of the building." End quote. No other comments have been received and there are no callers on the line. The applicant is with us, but has stated that they do not need to rebut public comments.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Okay, so we have no further public comments, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we will close public hearing? And then we? So we're closing public hearing. And commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, Commissioner Moseley?
Move approval with the staff's recommendation.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Brian Tibbs, I second.
Thank you. There's a first and a second. We will now take roll call on the motion. Oh, anyway. Sorry. This is protocol here. If there's any questions on the motion.
If anyone has discussion, if anyone has any comments, discussion. So after each motion, we'll check with the commissioners for discussion of the motion before we vote.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, did you hear Robin?
Yeah, they're not hearing me.
Okay, I got it. So she's, she's not muted. So before we vote on the motion, are there any questions or comments? I think I got that right now. Seeing none. Elizabeth, I think you've got your hand, hand raised?
Yeah, I got a text from someone and it says that this property is actually listed at 412. It's 412, not 421. And I'm not sure if that's correct or, or if that makes a difference, but. They said they tried, they said they tried to call in and couldn't get in.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're checking. Okay, we will check on that and correct it if, if it is, if it needs to be. Any other comments? Okay. No other raised hands? Ben Moseley?
Yeah, I would just add to, just add to the motion. For clarity, I think from the discussion in the photographs that were presented, we all know that the building, the building we're referring to and if the address is 12 or 21, it'd be a clerical correction by the staff and my, my motion stands as presented.
Thank you so much. We did clarify that it is 421 Church Street. The agenda is correct. And I believe we do have public comments.
Okay, the, the address is correct at 421 Church Street? And there is additional public comment? Someone calling in?
Phone lines are working.
Okay, phone lines are working. Is there a public comment? We're going to give it a second.
No, there is not.
Okay. Just give us a moment. Technical protocols here.
You can keep going.
Okay.
So you have a motion and a second. And so now you'll want to take a roll call.
Okay. We are taking the roll call for the motion first and second already of 4, 421 Church Street. Okay? Thank you for that. Vice Chairman Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yes.
Mr. Moseley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. We're ready to move to 1716 Greenwood. And now again, it's a time for anyone to call if they have public comments regarding this project. And again, the number is 629-255-1910. And Ms. Baldock will be the staff presenter.
Yes, 1716 Greenwood is a former Hobson Church site. The property includes two historic churches connected by a nonhistoric connector, a historic brick bungalow, and two nonhistoric outbuildings. In May 2015, MHCC approved a preliminary, preliminary SP for alterations to the historic buildings and the construction of three infill houses facing Greenwood and seven infill houses located off of Chapel Avenue. The SP has been approved by council and this is the final SP review of the final design features. Alterations to the Hobson Church include partial demolition of some of the foundations stoned on the Chapel Avenue facade. On this facade, the applicant intends to reduce the level of the grade by about three feet to create door openings out of the existing window openings at the raised basement level. They are also intending to combine the window openings to make them larger door openings. Staff finds the removal of the stone in between the two window openings to be inappropriate. Although staff is supportive of elongating the existing windows to make them doors, staff recommends that the stone between the openings remain. Staff recommends that the applicant submit more detailed drawing of the platform feature on the Chapel Avenue facade. The 2015 SP allowed for three detached houses to be constructed in between the church and the bungalow and for seven detached houses to be constructed off of Chapel Avenue along a new road slash driveway. These infill houses have height, scales, and setbacks that meet the SP and design guidelines. And the infill materials and design details also meet the design guidelines. So staff recommends approval of the final SP plans with the conditions noted in the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Baldock. Understand that the applicant is present and would like to speak. I remind you again that applicants, you have 10 minutes total and may reserve two minutes for rebuttal of public comments. And please begin with your name and address when you are speaking. Thank you.
This is Nathan Lyons. I am the owner and developer of 1716 Greenwood Avenue. And we worked alongside Blake Daniels, our architect, to design these homes and also create the sunken courtyard to make the basement square footage, I guess ultimately at grade level. And so we've worked what we feel within the guidelines and have no problem providing these, these bullet points here on the five items for approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lyons. Anyone else on the applicant side? Okay. Please stay on the line in case commissioners might have a question for you or rebut any public, public comment. Ms. Ziegler, do we, do we, have we received any comments regarding this project?
We have. Commissioner Withers has sent us an email and I'll read that if I may.
Councilmember?
Councilmember Withers, yes. "I had meant to participate electronically in today's Metro Historic Zoning Commission meeting, but unfortunately, my work schedule will not permit that. I did want to write to the commissioners to express my support for the staff recommendation for the 1716 Greenwood Avenue proposal for the historic Hobson Methodist Church campus. Before running for Metro Council, I had served as the Eastwood Neighbors' President for five years from 2010 to 2014. During that time, we entertained three adaptive reuse proposals for this historic church campus. The first two proposals were rejected, both by the Neighborhood Association as well as by the church congregation. We were then delighted to work with an East Nashville neighbor on a third proposal, which is reflected in the version of the plans that are before the commission today. Those plans were finalized through extensive community meetings in 2014 and were approved by the Metro Council in 2015 at around the same time that Nashville Next was adopted. While sometimes neighborhood groups are apprehensive about commercial uses in the middle of the neighborhood, the Eastwood Neighbors felt that the offices would be low impact and provide the best opportunities for respecting the historic interiors as well as exteriors of the true principal building and also expressed support for adding some light retail or coffee food service options within walking distance of many neighbors' homes. The original purchaser ultimately had to sell the property and the state of disrepair of these storied buildings became a renewed concern. We were again relieved when this applicant recently purchased the property and continued with those adaptive reuse plans that had already been vetted and enjoyed community support. While some of the new construction residential dwelling units are a little bit taller than what would typically be supported by the Eastwood Neighborhood or approved by the commission, the neighborhood felt at the time, 2014 and 2015, that having a smaller number of residential units would create the least impact on the community. And we also recognized that this campus is quite large and these structures will stand at some distance apart from other historic homes in the neighborhood. I support the staff recommendations for this proposal to ensure that finishing touches are of highest quality and respect these historic neighborhood landmark structures integrity. Thank you for your consideration and for serving our county under the present circumstances. And we have not received any other comments and we do not have any callers."
Okay. Therefore, we will close public hearing on 1716 Greenwood. Commissioners, do you have, do we have any discussion on this project? Or, yes? All right, seeing no hands raised. I ask for the motion. Caitlin Jones? Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Moseley?
Yes, Commissioner Jones. And I move for approval with staff recommendations of 1716. with staff recommendations of 1716 Greenwood.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Mosley's second.
Okay, there's a first and a second. Any other discussion? Vice Chair, you had your hand raised. Would you, did you have any comment?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Thank you very much, and we will now move to roll call vote. Vice Chairman Stewart?
Yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Hi.
Okay, was that a yay or a nay, Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We will move forward to 1315 Gartland Avenue. And again, this is the time for the public to call the number, which is 629-255-1910. And Ms. Sajit with the staff will inform us of this particular violation.
Yes, so 1315 Gartland is a show cause hearing for a side dormer that was constructed differently than permitted. In September 2019, MHCC staff issued a preservation permit 2019-058323 for construction of a rear addition and a side dormer on the building's west side. The dormer was approved with its ridge height and eve height in line with the existing dormer on that side. As constructed, the dormer is taller than the historic dormer, a condition that is not present on this or on similar historic houses. The, the inappropriate size of the dormer is accentuated due to its location on the historic form and its proximity to the historic dormer. Staff recommends that the new dormer be reconstructed to match the dormer permitted by the original preservation permit within 60 days of the date of this hearing or to be removed and the original roof repaired within 60 days of the date of this hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Sajit. I understand the applicant is present and would like to speak, and she has also provided handouts to you via email that she may reference in her presentation. Ms. Smough, you have 10 minutes and may reserve two minutes for rebuttal of public comment. Are you on the phone? Ms. Smough? I see that you're unmuted. Okay.
Um, we do have her comments that we can read into the record since there are issues with the audio.
Okay.
So this was sent by, by the applicant. 1315 Gartland Avenue is located on the corner of Gartland and 14th and is the primary home for the Corriere's. It has an existing nonhistoric small rear addition with unused attic space. The owners wanted to add space without adding footprint, preserving outdoor lot space while keeping the historic integrity of the house intact. The architect and owners decided to renovate the first floor and add a new roof line over the rear of the house to take advantage of as much second floor space as possible while maintaining the existing footprint of the home. The attic was uninhabited and difficult to access while the architects were measuring the home, and they were not able, yes.
I apologize for interruption, but I think we've got Ms. Smough on the line.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you. Ms. Smough, you're, you're.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Okay, so I'm going to take off where Melissa, you know, just took her shit up off. And I'm going to go ahead and read through these comments. So the attic was uninhabited, difficult to access while we were measuring. And if you could take a look at, we do have a picture of the attic in that packet, hopefully that you can look at in this attachment one. And I mean, the opening up into that attic was about a 20 by 20 hole in the, the ceiling, and there's no floor and, you know, two by eight ceiling doors. So measuring those dormers was, it was very inaccessible. So we weren't able to accurately measure those existing historic dormers. What we did was we used field objects and photos to try to determine the size of those dormers as accurately as possible. Because of this, the dormers are drawn approximately 10 and 1/2 inches too tall. If you look at attachment two, this is in the presentation and shows the difference between, you know, the dash lines are what we drew on the primitive drawings and the solid lines are what is actually built and what is existing. So the store approved the new dormer because it was drawn to match the existing dormer. Once the team began construction on the new dormer, accurate field measurements revealed the 10 and 1/2 inch discrepancy. During a Metro code walk-through of the project, it was noted that unless the ceiling height was lifted to seven foot for, in that new dormer, the shower that's located there would fail the final inspection. So you can also see that in, well, actually, if you could take a look at attachment three, which is the second floor plan, you can see that we're trying to use every square foot. We're literally trying to smartly, you know, add space under this house on the second floor without expanding the home's footprint. But what we're rebuilding in the back was actually existing, an existing addition that was simply rebuilding. We didn't add any footprint for this project. That dormer that we're putting up there is believed to be the most hidden location for a shower. So we also have a couple of pictures from the inside, which I know, you know, is not possible for, I believe, you know, Fred who was out on the site to actually take a look at. But we have a picture of the owner, who is 5'5", standing in the historic dormer and standing in the new dormer. And so you can kind of, you can see, you know, where the discrepancy is and that difference. This dormer has built filler lines with the exterior wall of the historic dormer and is the same width and form. It is smaller than the new dormer built to the rear of the house. It is also located on the west side of the house or facing the house next door rather than 14th. So attachment seven shows the view from the street. So you can see the house next door, which is, you know, a similar dorm that the house was working on. And, and all those dormers, you know, moving in historic kind of aligned there on that roof. The owners are trying very hard to create a minimal impact on this historic house. They are removing wood siding salvaged from the home, historic windows in both the first and second floor, interior wood casing, moldings, and interior doors, and supplementing all of that with historic French doors from the Nashville Governor's Mansion. Historic preservation has been a major consideration for the remodel of the primary residence for the Corriere's. Myself and the clients have worked very hard and sacrificed, you know, quote unquote, large spaces and sometimes easier answers to floor plan challenges by foregoing the potential addition. Clients chose to work within the parameters of the existing floor plan to get the space that we needed without adding any footprint to the beautiful home. Determining that the dormer must be shorter means that the home cannot have a shower in this master suite. So it really means that, you know, the exterior impact really is minimal. You know, again, this is a dormer, but it's behind the historic dormer. It is, you know, you can see the view from the sidewalk. It is, it is tucked in back there. It is not on the corner. It is not facing 14th. It is on the interior side of this house. So the, the exterior impact is minimal, or the interior impact is very significant. If you could, you know, typically look at that second floor plan again, you can see we're, we're utilizing every possible square foot here. Thank you for your time and contributions for saving Nashville's historic neighborhood. Frank, the general contractor, and I believe maybe the owner are also tuned in right now if you have any questions for any of us.
Thank you, Ms. Smough. Also, please stay on the line in case we have questions or you will want to rebut any public comment. And do we have another caller? Okay.
We did not receive any written comments.
Okay, we have no other callers, and we don't have any written comments. So. Yes, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? At this time? Okay, I don't see any hands written at this, raised at this time. Okay, we will close public hearing on 1315 Gartland. Any further questions or discussion or propose a motion? We're not ready to make the motion, is that right? Okay, I don't see anything.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to raise my hands. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, with respect to the applicant, I understand what they're trying to do, but the matter is that it has been constructed different than was approved. It's not the commissioner's job to design projects for applicants, and therefore, I, I am in agreement with the staff recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner, are you making a motion?
Commissioner Jones, again, sure, you know, again, any other commissioners are welcome to give their thoughts, but regarding 1315 Gartland Avenue, I move to adopt staff recommendation that the new dormer be reconstructed to match the dormer permitted by preservation permit 2019-058323 within 60 days of the date of this hearing or removed and the original roof repaired within 60 days of the date of this hearing.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Price?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion. There's a second. Any other discussions before we make the call? All right, I see none. I'll do the roll call. So again, say yay or nay. Vice Chairman Stewart?
Yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yay.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yay.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will move on to 903 Carruthers. And now again, it's a time for anyone to call in for public comment. The number is 629-255-1910. Ms. Baldock's staff will inform us of this project.
This project is to demolish a non-contributing house and to construct a two-story house with a two-story daddie. With the conditions noted in your staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the project.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baldock, and the applicant is present, I understand. Mr. Layton, would you like to have a comment? Or presentation?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have any comments. I just wanted to thank you all for your time and just let you know that I'm available to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, and you're in agreement with the staff recommendation?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Please stay on the line if we just have any other questions.
We have not received any written public comments. Do we have any callers?
Okay, we have not.
We don't have any callers.
We don't have any callers, nor do we have, have received any other comments. All right? Commissioners, do you have any question for the applicant or a motion? Oh, wait, wait, we have to close public, public.
Well, first we'll ask if they have any questions, the applicant.
Yeah.
Seeing none, close public.
Okay, seeing none, close public hearing. Commissioners, either again, discussion or make a motion. Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Tibbs?
Commissioner Jones, and I just, I thought this one was a really nice project. It'd be a good addition of the Waverly Beaumont neighborhood. And yeah, so I'm, regarding 903 Carruthers, I move for approval with all staff recommendations.
And this is Commissioner Tibbs. I second that.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. And now we will, any other discussion? Seeing none, we will do the roll call. Yay or nay? Vice Chairman Stewart?
Yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yay.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yay.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you again. We will now move forward to 1521 Woodland. And again, a time for public to call in at 629-255-1910, and Ms. Sajit will give the presentation.
Yes, so this is an application to construct a one and one-half story infill and outbuilding on a vacant lot. The infill requires a side setback determination from 20 feet to 10 feet. And the outbuilding requires a setback determination from 20 feet to 14 feet 6 inches, both from the North 16th Street property line. The outbuilding will include a dwelling unit. The proposed infill meets all of the design guidelines for infill, including height and scale and setback and rhythm of spacing with the proposed setback determination on the side street. And here are the left side and rear elevations. The proposed daddie meets the design guidelines as well. And staff recommends approval of the proposed infill and outbuilding along with the setback determinations with the conditions outlined in your report.
Thank you, Ms. Sajit. Believe the applicant is present and would like to speak. And again, to remind the applicant that you have 10 minutes total and may reserve two minutes for rebuttal of public comment. So we have a call in for either Marcia and Kate, the Truitts?
Yes, this is Marcia. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
This is Marcia Truitt, owner at 1521 Woodland Street. I have no comment other than to say thank you for all your hard work, and we are supportive of all of the staff recommendations. We're excited to build it. Thank you.
Thank you, applicant. I have a hand raised by Brian Layton. Do you have public comment?
Sorry about that. That was an accident.
Okay. Do we have any call-ins? No other call-ins? Any other comments written to the staff? No other public comment? So we will close public hearing on 1521 Woodland. And now we will have commissioners deliberation. Or comments or questions?
Madam Chairman, this, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Both Commissioners Tibbs and Stewart have raised hands.
Um, my apologies. I don't know how that got raised. I'm sorry.
We get happy to raise our hand. That's all we can say. Vice, did, did you have a comment, Brian? Commissioner Tibbs, did you have another comment?
No, I did not. I, I was surprised when you said my hand was up. I apologize.
Okay, just we're, we're being, we're paying close attention. Vice Chair Stewart, you have, you have the chair here.
Madam Chairman, with respect to 1521 Woodland Street, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Mosley?
There's a second, there's a first and a second? Any other discussions or questions?
This is Commissioner Fitz. I just wanted to, this is a, was a redesign of a project we'd seen before in a separate application, and I just wanted to say I appreciate the work that the owners and architects have done on this and find it to be appropriate for the neighborhood now. And just thank you for your hard work on this as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, any others? I'm looking to see, just to be sure, nobody else has their hand raised or any other public comment? All right, well, public is enclosed. Sorry about that. We'll take the roll call of the motion. Vice Chair Stewart? Yay or nay?
Yay.
Thank you. Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
I, this is Commissioner Price, I can't hear anything anymore, what's going on, anybody hear me?
Same.
Yes, thank you, I was thinking something was wrong with my earpiece, I was about to.
Yeah, same here.
Manay, are you still there?
This is Alex Dickerson with Legal, everybody, if y'all could just be patient for a little bit, there have been some glitches that happened, and there might be some pauses, that's okay, they're probably working behind the scenes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, she said she can't hear me.
And you're back.
Okay, you can hear now, thank you. So we will roll call on, I think we've gotten Commissioner Stewart, Fitz, and Jones, Commissioner Mayhall, Mosley, and Tibbs, oh, sorry, Commissioner Mayhall?
Yeah, this is Commissioner.
Yea or nay?
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay, Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm just gonna go through that, Commissioner Price, did you already say yes?
No, I didn't, but I do now, yea.
Oh, all right, great, thank you, Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
All right, I think we all have answered, correct, Robin? Okay. Okay, thanks for the patience on that, had a little techno glitch. All right, we will move on to 922 Montrose. Again, the public can call in to 629-255-1910, and Ms. Saget will give the presentation.
This is a request to construct a second-story rear addition that will not increase the footprint. No other changes to the historic house are proposed with this application. The applicant requests to clad the addition in vinyl siding to match the existing material on the house. While the house currently has vinyl siding, this is not a historic material and is specifically not allowed by design guidelines in Section 3D1A. Since the siding on the house is not proposed to be replaced as part of this project, the existing vinyl siding may remain, however, the materials for the proposed new construction must meet the design guidelines. As proposed, the addition will set in one foot from the sidewall, not the two feet required for two-story additions by the design guidelines. The two-foot inset not only helps to identify the new construction from the historic house, but also helps to mitigate the visual impact created by the potentially incompatible massing of a two-story eve on a house that is characterized by single-story eves. Staff finds that an upper-level addition could be appropriate in this case, as long as the addition is set in two feet from the wall below per the design guidelines. Also, there is a window on the left-side facade that appears to encroach into the roof plane of the historic house, which is not appropriate, staff recommends shifting the window somewhat to the left to avoid this scenario. So staff recommends approval of the project with conditions noted in the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Saget, understand that the applicant is present and would like to speak. Again, she has sent a handout that was forwarded to the Commission and maybe, may be referenced in her presentation. Ms. Jacobs, you have up to 10 minutes total and may save 2 minutes for rebuttal of public comment.
Thank you, hi, this is Cara Jacobs, owner of 922 Montrose. First, I just want to start off by thanking you all for your service and your time today, working with the staff through our project has really been easier than we expected, so really appreciate all the time and diligence that we've experienced thus far. A little bit of background, so my wife and I purchased this home a little over a year and a half ago. We purchased it because we do very much appreciate the historical significance of the house and the neighborhood in which we are living. We have a family and we look forward to expanding our family, and in expanding our family, we need to add a couple more bedrooms, and so we were looking at ways we could do this without expanding the current footprint. So the drawings that were presented, as well as the additional presentation that was handed out in advance, I believe shows that, in particular, our request to go from a two-foot inset to a one-foot inset would not impair the, the historic significance visually of our home, based on where the house next to us sits. So we tried to articulate that in the pictures that we provided. Between the one-foot and two-foot difference, it would impair our ability to add the two bedrooms that we need for the expansion of our family, so we really are requesting that that be waived. The other staff recommendations, in particular, the window and the siding, we accept those and will make the addition such that it's in compliance with the staff recommendation. With that, would gladly take any questions, and again, appreciate your time and service.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. No, you might, please stay on the line in case there's any public comment that you would like to comment on.
There's been no public comment and there are no callers.
Okay, as of now, we have no callers coming in, nor have we received any other email or any other correspondence for public comment. Commissioners, do you have any questions to the applicant? No hands raised so far? Okay. Closed public hearing? Any other discussion or a motion? Mr. Price?
Yes, I'd like to say I understand the applicant's desire to, to put an addition on the house and add bedrooms for a growing family, I fully appreciate that. We do, however, have these guidelines in front of us that we can, and in terms of the two-foot setback for new additions, we consistently uphold that for pretty much all other applicants that come before us. I feel like it's a design problem that can be solved without, without going against the spirit or the letter of the guidelines, and I would encourage the applicant to work with their designer or architect to see what other options there are. As it is now, I support the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments? Or make a motion? Commissioner Price, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, with respect to 922 Montrose Avenue, I move for approval of the staff recommendation.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Commissioner Jones, second.
There's a first and there's a second, any further discussion? All right? Did I see, Mr. Mayhall? Did you have a comment, Commissioner Mayhall?
No, nothing.
Okay, all right, here comes the roll call. Commissioner, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yea.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Right, thank you very much. We will now move on to 1008B Villa Place. And again, the public can call in to the number, which is 629-255-1910, and Ms. Warren of the staff will present the project.
Yes, this is a proposal to build an outbuilding in the rear yard. The bottom-right photo is from the rear of the building. It is designed so that half can be built now for Unit B's use and the other half later for Unit A's use. The project meets the design guidelines with the exception of the side setback and the square footage, which is proposed at 880 square feet, but according to the design guidelines is limited to 750 square feet. Staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Believe the applicant, Mr. Smith, is present and would like to speak. You have up to 10 minutes and may reserve 2 minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
We sure can, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you guys, appreciate your time and consideration in this, and I was just looking at the staff recommendations, but that screen left, and I unfortunately didn't receive anything beforehand as to, there they are, okay, great, so as it stands now, we need to redesign, if I'm reading this right, to, are we, yeah, just basically, if you could kind of clarify where, where you guys are wanting to go with this.
Ms. Warren?
Yes, so I can address it, or Mr. Alexander might want to step in, either way, but basically, yes, we, the total square footage allowed would be 750, so we are proposing that this should be reduced. And then we also have this setback issue as well.
Okay, well, then, yeah, I guess we just would appeal, see if you guys, basically, per side would be an increase of 65 square feet, and yeah, it would just, it would be greatly appreciated if we could add that to have, I guess, efficient, you know, use of the backyard space there for storage and for vehicles. So, I've got the homeowners here with me.
Would they like to speak as well?
No, the, the intent was to have the garage.
Could you please give us your name and address, please?
Sorry, Joseph Schuler, 1008 Villa Place, Unit B.
Thank you.
The intent was to connect the two garages together, so they aesthetically look like the rest of the home, like it was built at the same time. The concern and the reason why they're put together in the footage is that when separated, it looks like two individual units, and the space in between is approximately three feet and 20 feet long, which is really unusable space. It's really just dirt on the ground there, so the intent was to connect them and make it near the rest of the home. And that's one reason why the space is a little bit bigger. Versus have two single units sitting there and a three-foot strip in the middle, trying to get your garage, or your lawnmower and your weed eater in between.
So, yeah, I think that's all we have, appreciate your guys' consideration, and yeah, intend to make this top-quality, so, but yeah, just appreciate your consideration for the square footage.
Okay, please, please stay on the line, we may have questions, or you might rebuttal for public comment.
Okay.
Ms. Ziegler, do we have any comments regarding this project?
We do, we received an email from Karen Calidemos at 907 Villa Place, and she writes the following quote, "I am writing to oppose the construction of the outbuilding as proposed at 1008B Villa Place. The size of the building and the reduced setbacks are inconsistent with the guidelines. The setbacks will likely cause problems for codes, making the possible pathways between properties narrow and may cause problems for the neighbor to decide, especially if they later decide to construct an outbuilding. I would support construction with the recommendation for this toward staff. Thank you for your time," end quote. We did not receive any other public comment, and we do not have any callers.
Okay. Mr. Smith, you're the applicant, do you have any other rebuttal to that public comment?
Yeah, just thinking about this, if, so the space in between the outbuilding and the, the next neighbor, which would be maybe 1006 or 1000, yeah, 1010, the other side there, if we build it according to the guidelines, the same, the three-foot setback to that property will be the same. So the only thing that's, in our understanding, looking at the guidelines, that would be different is the space between the two buildings, which is just like the, the house itself, has zero space between it, would be the same, and so that's the only difference that would really be taking place here as far as not meeting the guidelines. So the five-foot setbacks that, that we, by, by attaching the buildings, we have, anyway, basically, if we did it two separate outbuildings that were 375 square feet each, we would be permitted to have those structures three feet from the neighboring properties. So just the logic of it, I'm not, you know, there's, it's just my personal opinion, but the only thing that will be changed by the, the setback variance is the space between the two structures, and that will be only benefiting the residents, and nobody, you know, it's not going to affect anybody else anywhere else, other than the two residents on this property. And so therefore, we feel it's fine and it'd be a beautiful thing. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's kind of my thoughts there, and.
We may, we may come back and ask you, so give us just one moment, our, our staff, Sean Alexander would like to make a comment.
Thank you. Yeah, hi, this is Sean Alexander, I just think there's a little confusion, and I just thought I might clarify. Thank you, Melissa, for putting up the site plan. So the guidelines allow 750, an outbuilding on this lot to have 750 square feet. The applicant is proposing two halves, each with 440 square feet. So if they were just building one section, it would meet the guidelines, but because it's doubled, it's a total of 880 square feet, which exceeds the design guidelines. The issue is not that the two outbuildings are connected, but that their total footprint exceeds 750. You could do two outbuildings of 325 each, or you could do one outbuilding with a total of 750. The other issue is that the bulk zoning regulations have a side setback requirement of three feet, but when the building passes over a threshold of 700 square feet, the side setback requirement becomes five feet. So because they are having a total outbuilding of 880 square feet, it exceeds the guideline and doesn't meet that setback requirement.
Commissioner Mosley, did you have a question to the applicant or staff?
For staff, I'd say just to be clear, so that, I guess, we all understand, the applicant understands, there's a, there's a lot line, it appears from the drawing that's up on now, there's a lot line drawn between these units, but this is a horizontal property regime that doesn't, these aren't two individual lots, so you don't get 2 times 750, you just get 750, if I heard staff correctly. That's correct.
Okay, any other questions? For the moment? Okay. I think we haven't closed public hearing yet, have we? So, does the applicant have another, any, any other minutes? So, does the applicant have another, any other minutes that we have for rebuttal? Say that one, okay, all right. We are closing public hearing on 1008B Villa Place. Any commissioners have any comments or discussion? Commissioners Tibbs and Vice Chair Stewart.
I guess, this is Commissioner Tibbs, I guess I can go first. So, if you don't mind, could you put the site plan back up? I'm glad you cleared that up, Sean, because I was like, why do we have to split those between... So, how you clarified that makes sense, and I hope the applicant understands that as well. Maybe this is first, I'll ask Sean if he knows the question, answer. But, so I'm assuming this is a double garage, is this a tight double garage? Because I'm very much, pretty much leaning toward staff recommendation, but I wanted to just clarify a couple of things as far as, is it just a garage, and am I... It seems like it's generous, maybe I should say it that way.
Well, I mean, if it were for a single-family home, it would certainly be a rather large structure. It's more than your standard 2-car. The issue you have with a duplex in R6 or R8 zoning is that they, both units, have the hope of having 2 cars, but that creates a 4-car garage on a standard-sized lot.
Yeah, well, it just, yeah, I'm right now, and just now that the whole conversation is going, I won't say I'm just vehemently opposed to three... So, if there's other, I do want to listen to the other comments, but there's something about the bulk of it, that it does feel like the setback should be less. I'm really, I'm personally a little bit more concerned about that being... I'm sorry, setback being more, maybe even closer in line with the units than I am the actual bulk square footage. But that's kind of where I am right now, I'd be curious to kind of hear what others say, but that's kind of where I am, and it's falling more in line with staff recommendation.
One last comment, this is again Sean Alexander. The recommendation, the recommendation that we made, it sounds a little bit open-ended, that we say it shouldn't exceed 750. That's because if Unit B wants to build a 440-square-foot garage, and the next-door neighbor, just Unit A, wants 310 square feet, that would meet the guidelines. So, we wanted to kind of leave that in there as an option, that's why it was... The recommendations were written the way it is. I don't know if Unit A owner wants to sign a covenant acknowledging that, or if even that would be binding. Metro can't enforce contracts between private parties, so that might be out of our hands.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes, a question for Sean. Sean, if I heard correctly, if the structure is over 700 feet, then codes requires a 5-foot setback. So, if I heard that correctly, then that would mean that if we, you know, if we stick with the 750 square feet, they would still need a setback reduction, depending on what the reconfiguration to reduce the square footage would be. Is that correct?
It may, the two conditions are, could be independent. I kind of thought that taking care of the footprint would take care of the setback as well, but I guess it doesn't, it might not necessarily. The two sections of codes that cover outbuildings, one has 700, one has 750. That's why there's a discrepancy between the guideline allotment and the setback requirement. It comes up occasionally as causing a problem, but usually, if something meets the footprint 750, it's not an issue meeting the setback. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with... I mean, when I looked at this project, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry that, you know, the outbuildings are allowed 750 square feet, so that is what they have recommended. And therefore, I'm in full approval of staff recommendations on this project. And in that vein, I will make a motion regarding 1008B Villa Place to adopt staff approval with the proposed recommendations.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Commissioner Price?
Commissioner who? Please say that again.
Price.
Oh, Commissioner Price, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand raised. Okay, so we have a first and a second, and I see that other hands are raised, so for additional discussion. Commissioner Tibbs and/or Vice Chair Stewart.
Sorry, I just didn't take my hand down.
Okay.
Yeah, likewise, sorry.
Okay. Any other discussions, commissioners? Okay, we're ready for the roll call. All right, here we go, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yay.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we will move on to our final project of the day, and that is 916 Ackland Avenue, and again, the public can call in. Okay, 629-255-1910, and Ms. Baldock on staff will inform us of the project.
Yes, 916 Ackland is an application for four infill houses on four recently-created lots. Staff finds that the four infills meet the design guidelines, except for the addition of some windows, which the applicant has already sent new drawings to address. So, therefore, staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in the staff report. The applicant has chosen not to present. He has stated that he is in support of the conditions, and I think he is available if the commissioners have comments for him or questions for him, but otherwise, he's just in support of the staff comments.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baldock. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any...
We have not received any public comments, written comments, and we don't have any calls.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any other discussion or question on 916... Do we close?
We're asking you to...
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions to the applicant or staff? Okay, Commissioner, Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, with respect to 916 Ackland Avenue, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
Okay, and thank you for that. We actually were just waiting for any other discussion, but we have, need to close public hearing first, and we are now closed public hearing. Now, we will accept your motion. And since you've made the motion, is there a second? Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones, I second.
Okay, there's the motion, there's a first and a second. And again, any other discussions? If not, we will do the roll call. All right, ready for the roll call? Commissioner Vice, Vice Chair Stewart?
Uh, yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, and we are not done quite yet. Ms. Ziegler, do you have any additional information?
I do, there are two cases where not everyone who wanted to speak got an opportunity to do that, and since we're, this is sort of new territory for all of us, we thought we would ask all of you if you wanted to rehear them. We'll need four concurring votes to rehear the case. The first one is 421 Church Street. Is there a motion to rehear?
Let me, if I could speak up right now, this is Alex with Legal again. Just because we're still figuring out technology, we don't want anyone to have the perception that because of us, they were unable to be heard and call it into question. So, I would strongly recommend voting to rehear, considering the applicant's comment, and then you can vote again with the full applicant.
Okay, duly noted, Legal. And what is the other, Robin?
The other one will be 1315 Gartland, but let's start with 421 Church Street.
Okay, so how do we, are we doing that? This is for public comment, or do we have to go through the project again?
We'll take a vote for whether or not you want to rehear the case.
Okay, is there a motion to rehear the case? Mr. Mosley and Commissioner Stewart?
Yes, in light of comments by counsel, and so that we can not have to rehear these at some future date and/or possibly litigate them, I move for a rehearing of the cases in question, 421 Church Street being the first.
All right, there's a motion, Vice Chair?
And this is Commissioner Stewart, and I second his motion.
All right, do we need to do a roll call on that? Okay, let's do the roll call, Commissioner, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, this is Robin Ziegler again. Just for the record, I wanted to explain why we were asking if you wanted to rehear the case. A caller tried to get through, she knows one of the commissioners. She let that commissioner know that she couldn't get through, and I'll read you the text that I received. Ann Butterworth is saying that when she called in, she was prompted to leave a message. I think that may have been because she was calling the number on the agenda, which was for voicemail messages prior to the meeting. And the text continues, she is the same one who is concerned about the address. You may just want to check, I'll just plug this, you may want to check the number to make sure it's correct. So, if Ms. Butterworth would like to call in, now would be the time, or anyone else who might want to call in, now would be the time to call in. And that number, again, is probably on your screen.
I've got it, here we go, 629-255-1910.
And while we're waiting on the possibility of additional public comment, I believe the applicant has joined us. Is Tony Girantana on? Give us just a second. Go ahead, Mr. Girantana.
You have the phone, Mr. Girantana? We're having some trouble with the connection again. Yeah, he's unmuted, but cannot hear. We are not able to hear you, Mr. Girantana. Please give us a moment. The applicant is about to join our tough conference.
Hi, this is Tony Girantana. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know, I'm calling in separately on my phone because I wasn't able to speak on my iPad, and I just want you to know I'm available if you need me to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Give us just one moment to see if we have any others who might have a question. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay. Okay, all right. Mr. Girantana, thank you very much. It looks like that we have no questions at the moment, and, but we will, we will do another vote on this particular project.
Okay, great, and I can also confirm for you that 421 is the correct address. Our Veridian Tower is 415 next door, and so this would be odd numbers moving up.
Thank you for clarification, we appreciate that.
Thank you, hanging up now, bye-bye.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, commissioners, we shall, again, ask for the vote, I mean, ask for the motion and a second, and then vote.
If I can step in here, my understanding is that this individual who was supposed to call in, because that person doesn't really know that we were reopening this to allow him or her to call in, it might be appropriate for the commissioner to whom she texted to give that phone number information to Robin, so that we can try to get into contact with this person. I just think for the security of the vote, I'd rather exhaust as much options as we can to try to get a hold of this person.
I believe she did call in a moment ago and said she did not want to speak. Is that correct? Yes, that's correct.
Okay, let's note that for the record.
Say that one more time, Alex, please.
I was just saying, that needs to be in the record, that the person who attempted to call claimed that, and said that they were unable to connect during the first hearing, has been given the option and has called in and declined to speak here. And then that way, you can take your vote, having exhausted all options for public comment.
Okay, duly noted. We can continue to make the motion, a second, and then a reroll call. Vice Chair Stewart?
With respect to 421 Church Street, first, I'd like to commend the owner of this for making this a landmark. Certainly, in everybody that's spent time on Church Street, it is definitely a landmark, and having that additional protection is appreciated by this commission and by the community. With respect to that, 421 Church Street, I move for approval based on staff recommendations.
There's a first, is there a second? Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Jones, I second.
All right, there's a first and there's a second, we will now take roll call. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, and Robin, what's the other?
And the other case we wanted to ask you if you wanted to reopen is 1315 Gartland, which was the side dormer. So, is there a motion to rehear that?
Commissioner Jones?
I move to rehear the case.
1315 Gartland. Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Fitz?
A second.
All right, there's a first, there's a second, take roll call. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price? Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, and Commissioner Tibb?
Yes.
Okay, we shall rehear.
The other members of the application party, I believe it's the owners, have called in and wanted an opportunity to speak.
All right, and please say your name and address, please. Applicant, are you here?
Yes, good afternoon. My name's Natasha Carreri, and I am one of the primary homeowners of 1315 Gartland. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have asked to reopen this case in light of some circumstances that I believe was not outlined, and wanted to make sure that the commissioners understood that and that I could implore my case to them. I am living in the home as a primary, or with my husband, while we do this large renovation. And as we all know, on March 3rd, we had a tornado come through two blocks away from our home. So when Metro Codes came through for the plumbing approval on the first run, they made note of the fact that the dormer was not going to be sufficient for the seven-foot clearance in the shower that was designed by Caitlin Smith at 912 Architects. Just because of the complication and of the inaccessibility of the attic, they approximated that dormer, and it came out to be 10.5 inches short. I am very proud to be a Lachlan Springs inhabitant, and my husband and I greatly enjoy our historic status of our home, do not take it lightly. In fact, we urged and required our framing team, when they were removing part of the historic siding that was located inside of the house, we required them to put that aside instead of it being thrown away. And my husband and I, during COVID-19, actually removed nails in order to add that siding to two of the new dormers located on the 14th side and the west side of the house in order to make sure that we were still maintaining the beloved historic nature of our home above and beyond what historic requires. In addition, we purchased three sets of steel doors from, that were removed from the governor's mansion in 2008 remodel, and we are paying extra money in order to remove rust and replace windows in order to add that into our remodel. So I say that in keeping with the fact that we have, we're not flipping this home, we are primary owners of this home, are very proud of the historic nature of it, and look to maintain that and preserve that. The dormer in question on the west side is away from both the Gartland and the 14th Streets, and therefore is not easily recognizable from the passageways of both cars and pedestrians. We decided not to extend the house's footprint and instead went up in order to maintain the garden, as much garden as possible in the back, since I'm a gardener and like to have lawn in my backyard instead of a house. And so in keeping with the footprint, when we went upstairs, we had to allocate every square foot of our space upstairs, and in order to do that, desperately need this dormer to be a shower. The new dormer in question is smaller than the two closet dormers that are in the newly remodeled master bedroom, which is closest to the alleyway. So it is smaller than the ones that were approved at staff level that are actually more recognizable from 14th Avenue. And, you know, one of the reasons why we decide, we went with Metro Codes is that since we were living in this property, the roof was actually removed, part of the roof was removed for the remodel the night before the tornado came through. So being a homeowner that was living in the house with a partial roof, obviously I had a little bit of PTSD and wanted roofs on my house as quickly as possible, and that's why we had a roof placed on this dormer instead of waiting for historic commission to review it here a month later. So I am requesting, patting hands respectfully, as a proud neighbor and resident of Lachlan Springs, that the commission considers approval of this dormer for my shower in light of the fact that I don't know where I would put the shower if the dormer was not allowed, because I'm caught in a tough spot between the approval of Metro Codes and trying to abide by them. They already said that I couldn't have my tub in my master bath because of clearance, and so now we are just down to a shower, and that is this one in question. So with that, I happily open it up to any questions that you might have and defer to the panel. Thank you so much for allowing me to state my case and review it after the fact. I know all of you guys are busy, and a lot of us have a lot of busy schedules.
Thank you, applicant, please hold on, we may have some questions for just a moment. Thank you. Thank you for coming back on as well, and your patience on the technical difficulties.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioners, any question to the applicant, or staff is also here to answer questions? Commissioner Mosley?
I have maybe a little bit to staff and certainly to the applicant. I get that, obviously, Metro Codes is going to enforce the codes as they interpret them, and sometimes those can be in conflict with what we're trying to accomplish. It appears to me that the top of, or the bearing height, and your architect may be able to speak to this, your bearing height is at seven feet, and that's how these walls were constructed. I'm assuming, because the bearing plate is at seven feet, that you're going to have a flat ceiling in this bathroom, shower, and that's exacerbating because you start the roof from there, the appearance of this from the outside. And my question would be, and I certainly would support this interpretation, is in the code, in the residential code, there is some leeway, at least as I understand it, in measuring an average, and as sensitive as you seem to be to the historic nature both of your house and preserving historic assets, I'm curious if the bearing height of the roof could be brought down and that some mitigation could be made between what code is going to require and what the appearance of this dormer is going to look like from the outside in its close proximity to the historic dormer, and how it certainly is larger than.
I'm happy to answer questions in whatever format you guys want to. Would you like me to respond individually?
Sure.
Okay, there actually is not going to be a flat roof. So because I guided my architect, I wanted to make sure that the individual dormers maintain the same quality of roofline. And if you look at the edges of my roof, they flatten out a little bit like a pagoda. And so in order to maintain that similarity between all of my dormers, it requires a certain head height, and it's actually not going to be flat. So the inside of the roof is going to go up, and the shower will have, the plumbing will be tucked up inside the slope of the roof. So if we were to pull it down any, yes, we might be able to get inside of that being approved on Metro Codes and Historic, but then you run the risk of changing the roofline that I've tried to maintain with all of my dormers and keeping them sloped like they are on the edges, like I said, like a pagoda. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but I'm struggling with, it seems that the argument, and I could be misrepresenting or misunderstanding, the argument is we need seven feet. The measurement of the seven feet is from the floor to the spring point of the roof. If seven feet is where we're starting from, then that's, the measurement of seven feet, it could be measured to an average, which would then bring the roof down, and it would just take the form and lower it on the roof. It wouldn't necessarily change it. As I see it, and as I see it constructed, certainly it would require that it be reconstructed, and I'm not suggesting that it wouldn't, and that that, for you, is an expense, and probably an expense that you wouldn't want to bear. But I'm struggling with how that, how it can't be done.
Sure, so the seven feet is not from the floor to the peak of the roof. The seven-feet guideline that Metro Code was in static on is up to the top of the wall. So seven feet, that has the 10-foot, 5-inch variance, is the flat wall, not to the, not the interior floor to peak of the roof. And what we have-
Yeah, I'm in disagreement with that interpretation.
Well, and from what I have understood with Metro Codes is because of the growth of Nashville, a lot of new Metro Codes individuals have been hired, and they have a very black-and-white interpretation of the rule. And so when we had the first walkthrough, when he came with his measuring stick, that seven feet was a hard and fast requirement from Metro Codes. The seven feet is the wall, and then the slant of the roof starts. And I say this as a homeowner that doesn't know, I mean, I know so much less than you guys as a panel, and the architect, and the general contractor. So I'm stuck in a rock and a hard place, and like I said, want to adhere by my neighborhood and by, you know, what I bought into. But this is the guidance that's been given from Metro.
Yep, I will acknowledge that whether I disagree or not, for you to get a use-in occupancy permit, the co-inspector has to agree. So I think, you know, I don't for a minute think that I can be present in disagreement with that and it make any difference whenever you are seeking a use-in occupancy permit for this work. But I do think I would, I would certainly want staff to have a conversation, and perhaps even dig into the details of where that measurement can be taken from. I could be wrong, but I think I understand that that can be, six feet, seven is what I remember as sort of a minimum, and even in some occupiable spaces in upper levels where you've got knee walls, that those heights are often measured as an average. But I could be wrong because it specifically is in a bathroom, in such a tight space.
Okay, we have another commissioner that may have a question. Commissioner Price?
Yes, thank you. Just going off of what Commissioner Mosley was just saying, it seems to me that this problem arose from, it was missed at the design stage. So really, the question of the code, of codes and why it was designed, as was originally printed, and the question about height and seven feet and all, really needs to go back to me, to the architect, who missed this. So have you, to the applicant, have you discussed it with the architect? What did they say about codes? Did this catch them by surprise too? Or where was the communication break down? Yes, is my question.
So she, like, she tried to get, you know, estimations of attic. Like I said, it was inaccessible prior to starting this renovation. And so when we had the roof open and our Metro Codes official came through for the first plumbing inspection, he was adamant on the seven, well, I think it's the seven-foot rule. So at that point, you know, we were coming right off of, coming right off of the tornado occurring and, you know, the emotional impact on that. So I think ultimately, the onus is on me in not being knowledgeable and having a little bit of PTSD after the fact and seeing all the destruction two, you know, two blocks away. So I think, you know, what we, what we thought is Metro Codes is going to fail this project, and me being impacted by not having a secure roof over my head and not understanding the responsibilities and where the proper procedures came through. You know, we adhered to Metro Codes in it, especially in light of the two closet dormers in the master bath being larger with, larger than the dormer in question. So I know that doesn't really answer, because everything was kind of muddied in March and a lot of emotion wrapped up in the tornado, which doesn't help you guys in making a logical decision. But, you know, ultimately, I am the homeowner. Ultimately, the buck stopped with me, and I was really impacted and wanted to make sure that my roof was closed up and decided to go with Metro. You know, like, my general contractor said that my roofline was so compromised that if the tornado had come on top of my house, it would have fallen in on us. So with that knowledge, we chose to adhere to Metro Codes on the shower. And ultimately, that, you know, that's on me as the homeowner.
Okay, thank you.
I think we've actually exceeded our time. So are there any deliberations? Yeah, deliberation between commissioners here? Or a motion? Or would you like to hear from staff?
Commissioner Jones here. Yeah, I just, I believe I made the original motion. And while, you know, we, again, as a commission, I think as a whole, I might be speaking for everyone, so if this doesn't apply to you, you can chime in. But, you know, we do have a lot- know, we, we do a lot of sympathy for these applicants and, and what they go through. But at the end of the day, you know, it's not up to us to decide where they're, where they're putting showers, where, you know, if you bought a small house, if you can somehow add on five bedrooms, which isn't the case here. But it's just, these things come up again and again. And, and the applicant's own architect will know that as soon as we approve things that are deviations from the norm and deviations from the design guidelines that are put in place by the neighborhood themselves, they are, been brought to us, you know, in photo, photographic evidence of, well, this has been done before. So again, I just, the design guidelines are pretty clear on this. It was approved as something and then built as something else. So I can't, I can't support changing from my original motion of, of adopting the staff guidelines for this one.
Okay. Commissioner Fitz?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think, you know, especially with this dormer being adjacent to the historic dormer, I just can't, you know, can't find a way to, to approve it. Based on Commissioner Mosley's comments, I would encourage you to pursue a variance with Metro codes. I know that, you know, prolongs the process. I don't know how that, if, if the applicant was allowed to do that, I don't know how this 60 days would be affected in that process. But I, I do feel like there could be a potential for a solution if, if, if someone, you know, understood that height and the, the measurement that Commissioner Mosley had mentioned. I just feel like that could be worth, worth pursuing. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, ready to, well, yes, we do have to have public hearing. Closed public hearing. Yeah, oh, that's right. She was the applicant. So we didn't have anybody to have any public hearing on. Yeah. Closed public hearing. We are ready for a motion if the commissioners are ready. We just wanted to make sure there were no calls, commissioners, just to double check. All right. Commissioner Jones, your hand is raised.
Thank you. I'll just say regarding 1315 Gartland Avenue, I make a motion to adopt the staff recommendations for this project.
Yes, for this violation?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I see your hand now, Commissioner. Okay, there's a first and a second. No other discussion. We will make the roll call. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Tib?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Anything else, Robin? All right, commissioners, anything else? We are concluding this agenda. Again, we want to thank our public that has joined us, commissioners, staff, and Metro IT. Have a great afternoon.